Yes, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know, great, okay. All right, let's start with our mission and vision. Sorry, start with the mission and vision, Katrina, please.
Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you. So we'll start tonight with public comments. There we go. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length, and the school committee cannot take action on public comment. But the chair can accept comments following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can always be made by email at schoolcommittee@falmouth.hague12.ma.us. Is there any on here for public comments? Any one? One line? All right, same note. Let's have a reading of the Wampanoag. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the recording system. Thank you. Thanks, Mike. I don't have my notes. I appreciate that. This is Lori's folder. I don't have my folder. So I'm winging it. Everyone can help me. Between nine of us, I'm sure we'll get it right. So, a reading of the Wampanoag landing, please.
Sure. The landing now good from 2021. Falmouth Public Schools acknowledges that we are gathering on the unceded ancestral land of the Wampanoag Nation. We recognize and respect the Wampanoag people, including those of Secaneset, Wapoe, Suporset, Tadaket, Tepoipoe, as original stewards of what is now known as the Town of Falmouth, and honor their enduring relationship with this land. This land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves and our students about the longstanding history of the Wampanoag people. In alignment with the four values of Falmouth Public Schools, we pledge to build an ongoing partnership with the Wampanoag Nation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And so, our first regular item is an update on the final 2023-2024 budget. Paul.
And I have to end up for everybody. Margaret, I can email you a copy of this after the meeting. But this is a real brief budget update. I just really wanted to be able to tell folks where we ended up for the year. It's not as detailed or broken down like school is normally accustomed to, because there's a lot of end-of-the-year machinations that go on. So when we, for example, have XH songs, we may move that into buying doors or doing floors, et cetera. And that will overspend on maintenance accounts. So this sort of, at the end of the year, kind of distorts the per-school log.
Because of the.
Because of those machinations. So, let's just start at the beginning. And the breakdown, and here you see just, you know, the top line, salaries and non-salaries expenses. So the original budget called 46 million. In salaries, and 9 million 751 in non-salaries. The total budget that you all approved for fiscal year '24 was 56 million 175. Now, the next column you see is the net budget trend. Or, let me just talk about that for a moment. We've made a real effort to move all of our employees' salaries off the grants and onto the budget. We just think that's a better way of operating. And so, beginning of this year, we moved in the 240 grant, which is our special education federal entitlement grant. We had, going into '24, we had about 840,000 plus in salaries, primarily TAs and medical aides in that grant. So we moved those individuals onto the budget. And likewise, we took out-of-district tuition costs and moved those into the grant. So it was just a swap. So, the net impact was that the salary line, obviously, by moving these salaries costs into the budget, went up by 850,000. And the non-salary expenses, by moving the tuitions onto the 240 grant, went down by 850,000. The total budget number was unchanged, but that was just sort of the beginning exercise. So let me know, there's about six individuals in total that are still covered by grant, making grants, and then mainly in the Title I grant for reading and math, et cetera. So, the vast, you know, by many vast majority of all employees are on the budget. Again, the discipline they have.
Yep, Terry, go first.
I'm sorry, remember, I was a parent teacher, not a math person. If the money isn't from our town or our, in our administration, how come it can't get incorporated into the budget? I don't understand the.
It's not incorporating the budget, it's just that we re-categorized about $850,000. So, if you take, the 240 grant, which was just north of $900,000, right? There were salary expenses that were expensed to that grant in the past. Going into '24, we moved those salaries onto the budget, which increased our salary expense line, the budget. But simultaneously, to keep the budget neutral, we moved out-of-district tuitions into the grant. So there's no net change in the budget. It's just the type of expense that we were putting into the grant. It's to keep our salaries, you know, as much as we can in the major budget. So, net neutral to the budget was just a reclassification.
I'm still perplexed how we can call it an expense if it's a grant.
Okay. The expenses either, so if you look at, if you look at the number here, the total budget was 56 million 175. After that, transfer the swap. And again, it's just recap categorizing it between salaries and non-salaries. The total grant, the total budget rather, is 56 million 175. We literally just moved salaries onto budget and moved the out-of-district expense for the same amount off budget into the grant.
I think I, I think I get your question. So, it's not that the sal, it's not that the grants are expenses. It's the expenses that we're occurring because of, that are supposed to get paid for by grant, or no one are getting paid for by grant, we're getting paid for by.
That's the part that's easy, I bet.
I was just rolling it around, trying to figure out, because you were both talking about two different things.
You have to give a part of the payout, she said.
I want double what I.
I'm sorry for confusing.
No, we're good.
Listen, Paul, you always. Thank you.
The second step was, again, starting with the same budget of 56 million 175 this year. The budget was increased at the whole town meeting by 153,000. And that.
Around 15,000.
Around 15,000, yeah. So that budget increase, 153,000 was to cover expenses for additional expense for the warrants elevated and more respond unit overruns. All right, so now, the budget for fiscal year '24 now increased to 56 million 328,843. And then, the third component, now, to tell you how we moved it up. So, again, 56 million 2328,843. At the end of the year, we had over, we had room left over in salaries that we didn't use, $108,000. We had expenses on the non-salary side that we could use that money for, and we did use the money for. So, as I mentioned before, particularly in the areas of maintenance. And so, we moved money from the salary line to the non-salary. And again, keeping it the total budget within that 56 million 328. If you look at the second from last call, you'll see where our final expenses came in at the end of the year. So the salary was 47 million 166. Non-salaries was the 9 million 121. And the total budget, 56 million 287. That left us with about $41,000 left over. Now, we continue, we will continue to spend that down. We're just about to move $39,000 of expenses that came in, that were allocated to the stabilization fund. They moved those in to use up that money. So, all in all, with that $56 million budget, we'll use all but $1,500 of that budget. So we got it. My point of all of this is to say, we got really, 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 really close to where we should in getting this done for this year. And, just for your knowledge, that would leave us, you know, the stabilization fund was total between the two years was 825,000 at the start of this year. It will begin this year with a balance of roughly 640,000. And, so that gives us a good cushion for '25 and also going into '26.
Which seems like a lot of money, but in special ed, it doesn't go.
It does, no. And you can have out-of-district tuitions that range from 55, 60,000 to, you know, total cost posted to 100,000. And so it's, it's going to be very expensive.
What was that question number again?
640,000. We think we'll end up by using about 20,000 this year. So. What was the current situation?
Any questions for Paul? So, type that. Very nice. Thank you. And, you know, we often say, we really appreciate these updates. They're really helpful. Makes us really feel like we're much more than Paul. So thank you for that. An update by Student Services on tiered focus monitoring reports.
Okay. So, for those of you who don't know, the purpose of the tiered focus monitoring is to track compliance with special education and civil rights. And school districts are reviewed every three years through this process to monitor student outcomes. So after last year's review, we received a letter in June which indicated two areas of concern. That's a very low number. There's more than 50 areas that can be indicated as being out of compliance. So, over the summer, we studied the root causes of the two issues that came up, and then developed a corrective action plan, which is submitted to DESI, and then we, you know, we work on that throughout the year. So the first area that we've identified was the provision of the IEP to the parents. So when we looked into it, the schools that were, that they found the compliance issues, the special education building administrators who are typically responsible for issuing the paperwork worked out on medical leave, so the mandatory timelines were not met. So, from a corrective action standpoint, we put some procedures into place so that everybody is on the same page with the timelines and some internal monitoring tools that more than just the SEVIs are responsible for. And then we're looking at training the relevant staff, and then we do our own audit of bodies to make sure that we're, that we are in compliance. And then the second area actually had to do with preschool. So, the concern was that our instructional groupings didn't meet the requirements for the student-to-staff ratios and class sizes. This was not an area of surprise. We've struggled with the half-day programs or the two-and-a-half-hour programs. We get the number of typical peers when we have our special education students so that things are not considered subseparate when you have too many students on IEPs and not enough typical peers. So we had identified this issue early in the school year last year, and was thinking forward about what we do in the future to try and help alleviate this. We did have a full-day preschool program last year, which was very successful. So that certainly indicated that there was more interest in that. So this year, we have decreased the number of the half-day programs. Instead of five, there's three. We have some longer days for peers, which are more like four hours. And then the students with IEP needs stay for an extra two hours, so that turns into a full day for them. And then we added two full-day preschool classrooms this year, which actually currently got the waiting list of 12 students. So, there's obviously a big need. Families are more interested in that. So in addition, as a district, one of the measures we took was hiring a special education building administrator specifically for the preschool program. We added a teaching team, and we've been collaborating with the Falmouth Coalition for Children on ways that we can improve awareness and attract more participation in the preschool program. And then we have also worked at trying to just increase our advertising, sending out flyers, posting them at daycares. We've had some meetings with local daycares and just trying to make sure that we're finding as many of the students as we possibly can. So those are the, those were the two areas. And if anybody has any specific question?
I have a quick question. So, if I understand you right, the problem is that the short days, we can't get enough peers because the parents are normal for days.
Correct.
So just make sure.
So we've had the AM/PM sessions, which, which does well for us because we have a large number of students on IEPs, so then we can kind of see twice as many, you know, we can offer that twice as often if you have an AM and PM session. However, the PM sessions, families are not interested in having their children attend the PM session. Very few families are. So we can't find enough peers who want to attend that. So we might end up with three students on IEPs and not enough peers.
Right. Is that the question, nap time?
I don't know.
It's got an ID. When I had preschool, I was always like them to go in the morning because it was nap time. In the afternoon.
Yeah. Makes sense. So, I think for working families too, it doesn't, you know, it's hard to fill that schedule.
Yeah. Katrina?
If you have a 12-child waiting list and your advertising still has there room for more children?
In the PM sessions, there is. There are a couple little slots in some of the other places, but not in the full day. Any other questions? Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. It's nice that we have only two things to work on.
It's true.
Yeah. Next up is acting on the field trip to New York City for October 30th year. Do you have the field trip information? Lori, did you want to say anything about it, or?
Yes, I think this year, it's, it's nice. We have Lauren Kenny, Jane Baker, and Heather Goodwin, all wanting to share the trip to New York City. So the students of AP Literature, AP Art, and AP Biology are planning the trip. They'll be visiting the American Museum of Natural History. They will attend a Broadway show, and then just be able to spend time at, you know, the New York City Public Library, as well as being able to walk around and getting some of the sights. So, the, this is a cross-curricular experience. It'll result in steam fair projects to be presented for community engagement in March. The Ephrasis poetry presentations, and the unique opportunity to connect to Shakespearean literary studies through the Broadway musical. So, we are recommending approval for this New York trip.
Great, answer your motion. Thank you, thank you. Any discussion or questions? All right, it's, oh, sorry, Margaret, did you have a question?
What Broadway?
Juliet.
Oh, yes. It's, oh, and Juliet, yes, it's really beautiful. Margaret, can I start us off with a vote for Paul?
Yes, and my battery's dying, so I'm going to have to plug it in, but yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Mike?
Hell, yes.
A dusty yes. During the year, yes. Last key, yes.
Will be, yes.
Never, yes. Well, it's also, yes, that's unanimous, and thank you so much.
Yeah.
Next up is acting on the 2024-2025 superintendent evaluation timeline. It is pink in your packet?
The page isn't pink.
No, no, not the page, the right, I guess it technically read. It looks pink to me. I read as color. So, I just want to take a second and sort of walk through it to make sure that we're on the same page. I realize the dates probably don't mean a lot to this full subcommittee, but the evaluation, subcommittee meant before it and laid out the structure for when everything needs to get done, by order, so we can make sure we make that final meeting and have everything complete by the end of the school year. So it's followed pretty much the same structure as last year. And you can see we're already on step three, because we've already been meeting all over the summer, but we didn't have a timeline in place. So later in the meeting, Lori's going to share her goals with us that the subcommittee worked on with her. Then, at our next school committee meeting, you can see under the description, it says that we will vote on her goals. Then, we'll have a little mini-training in our meeting on the evaluation process and a review of the summative documents, so that as we go through the school year, everybody knows what it is that we're supposed to be evaluating on from the spring. So none of it will be a surprise. Then, strange as it seems, the mid-cycle cycle starts in October, when we'll talk about what the mid-cycle process is during a regular meeting. Then in January, Lori will share her self-assessment of where she thinks she is through, halfway through the year. And then that is followed by a period where school committee members actually meet with the superintendent and provide feedback. So, if you feel like she's behind on a particular item, on one of her goals, that's your chance to sit down and say, can you fill me in on where we're at with this? Or do you have any additional information? Or if you think she's ahead, definitely share that sheet. So Sharon sends out an email during that time, asking everybody to sign up for a short meeting with Lori during that late January period. Then, in February, the evaluation subcommittee will meet again to talk about any feedback that school committee members offered on the mid-cycle, discuss whether or not anything needs to be adapted or changed in any way, and then review the summative plan.
Before you go on, that new, that sounds new to me.
Which one?
The one you just talked about.
Because it's always something that just the evaluation subcommittee does. Just checks in with the superintendent after the mid-cycle. So if you're just on the school committee.
Okay, that's right, it seems, okay.
Yeah, it's just this, so you're getting both the things that the school committee members are doing and you're also seeing what the evaluation subcommittee has to.
You want to see the feedback.
Yeah, so that tells you what happens. You heard that? Then in April, the superintendent will review progress on the goals and will do another presentation on the evaluation process for the end of the year to make sure we're ready for the summative evaluation. And then, the evaluations that we will actually complete are noted as the deadline, the big bold, April 23rd is when the deadline for submitting evaluations will be. And then again, it's followed with that same period of time where they meet with the superintendent to talk about your evaluation, and especially in the cases where maybe you think that she accomplished less than anticipated. It gives her a chance to then say, oh, but did you realize that I expected this? So it becomes more of a dialogue instead of just filling out a form. And then the very last day after any changes will be May the 2nd. And that sets, all of that sets us in, sets us up to be ready to vote on the summative evaluation in May before the election, which has been on my own goals. We, the people who are working with Lori all year are the ones who do the evaluation, and it's not changed, it's not messed up by people coming on and off the committee because of an election. All of those individual documents are compiled, and then, oh, this has taken, this should say, under May 3rd, it should say Kelly/Margaret. May 3rd, because I would compile the evaluation, and then Margaret would take it separately and check it, and make sure that I didn't mess anything up. Last year, Chris did that, and this year. And then Lori gets the evaluation. This piece, May 6th, is why you see a later item in our school committee agenda for tonight for adding the school committee meeting. Because as Terry pointed out, I think last year, we can't get the summative evaluation by email. It would be a violation of open meeting. So we need to come in and get the evaluation in person. So we need to add a school committee meeting. There won't be any other things on the agenda that way. It'll just be that.
You're just handing it to us?
Yeah, because we can't email it.
No conversation or anything?
No, I have to be really humble, I did it all last year. We did have to do the same thing last year.
It's just a, one little technical issue.
It's just a technical issue. We need to just stop the meeting, and then the next meeting we'll talk about it. And that's when everyone gets a chance to highlight a piece of their evaluation or something that they want to share, and then we vote on it. All right, sorry to be so lengthy about it, but I just want to make sure that we're all, like, on the same page with the process. It's very similar to last year. Let's get a motion to approve it, and then we can talk about.
So.
Thanks, Mike, second. Melissa? Any discussion about the timeline? And also, evaluation people, did I miss anything? My Zoomers? Glenna, Margaret, and Austin on evaluation, anything you want to add? Lori, anything you want to add about the process? No, I said so much, everybody's like, enough already. Okay. All right, so it's a roll call about to approve the timeline. Margaret, you want to start us off? Thank you, Glenna.
Approved, yes.
Sue. Oh, sorry.
Very, yes.
Against a yes. During the year, yes.
Last key, yes.
Last key, yes.
Never, yes.
And a lot of possible, yes, that's unanimous, thank you so much. All right, moving right on. Moving to the page. Next up is acting on that goodbye school committee meeting date, so it's adding that May 6th date into our regular schedule. Here, I've had been at 6:30.
Is there a motion? I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Terry. Second? Second. Thanks, Katrina. And again, is there any special?
And one, one piece, the April 2025 meeting, April 7? Because on the evaluation timelines is April 7th at 6:00 p.m. I just wanted to, on that.
I, we actually, do we know that for sure?
Well, I don't know.
Does that sound?
That would be the time we, I just don't know if we actually know it for sure.
Hold on. What is law, I want to.
Exactly, we mean at 1:00.
We don't, because they don't set the, they don't set.
They don't set.
Until after the, at the last night of the November meeting, they will.
They announce it, yes.
The URTBD by the date.
Yeah, yeah. But you know.
Well, we just approved the April 7th, 2025, the evaluation, which is.
And it might be that day.
Yes.
So let's keep it as it is, and we can, once we know when the. So let's keep it as it is and we can, once we know when the meeting is, if it's not the second, we'll just amend this.
So you?
Rather than.
Sure.
But, yeah. Okay, so it's just then, uh, just the basics, and we'll have to amend this one as well, Mike?
Yes.
Yeah. More of a date. All right, any last thoughts on the addition of that meeting day? Uh, and it's a roll call again, Margaret?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Glenda, start.
Yes.
Thank you.
And yes.
Against the yes, very good, yes.
Last key, yes.
Will be, yes.
Never, yes.
Well, also, yes, that's unanimous as well. That is. Next up. Acting on the F E F mini-grants, um, and Lori, you just wanna speak? Because you'll probably do better than I am. I was trying to keep my mind away through the best, I know you can start as well.
All right, thank you. In the spring, we, uh, we had to update our policies K C D and D D, which refers to the school committee approval for gifts and grants. Uh, if you, uh, might remember prior to, we only approved, uh, grants that were five hundred dollars more. Uh, and so now the policies state that they are for educational purposes only. We now align with the law, so it's all grants, no matter what the amount, but it is for educational purposes. Uh, since F E F grants are for educational purposes and the school committee approval is required, uh, the policy subcommittee discussed streamlining the approval process by giving a blanket vote for the F E F mini-grants. If you know, those are very, turned around very quickly, so teachers will write for them. They're anywhere from twenty-five dollars to three hundred and fifty dollars. And then they get turned around almost immediately. Uh, to be able to come back and have you approve every single one would be able, would hold up teachers being able to actually access the funds and to implement what they wanna, uh, what they wanna do. So I'm asking, uh, if we can take a blanket vote for all F E F mini-grants for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And, uh, that's, and we did much the same on May fourteenth of last year, even though it was, it was after, after the fact when we put the policies in place. Now we're doing it, uh, in advance, uh, so that as they come through, they'll actually be legitimate.
So.
Margaret?
So, uh, so be it. I'll say.
Was it, I wasn't looking, was it Margaret or Glenda?
I put it as Mike, I don't know who's second.
Glenda, Margaret, was it either? Yeah, okay, just making, because I was looking up, I didn't wanna mess it up in the.
Question.
Uh, any discussion on approval of F E F?
We have to approve this blanket vote every year.
We just do it once a year for all the little grants, um, and then other grants will just come to us. So that was a standing thing that came from old labor. Yes, state law. We, that's, we used to just never approve them at all, um, but the state is like, any grant that has educational purpose, we have to approve. And so since, especially for F E F, because they're so vetted, you know, they have a whole system in place for vetting of those projects and making sure that they're worthy of their money. So all we need to do is just accept them, so that they can turn around fast enough that teachers can.
As usual, just from myself, I don't see a match that makes it an illegal grant.
It's others, three, three hundred, three fifty?
Twenty-five dollars to three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, anything above that would be through the regular grant process and then we'll get notification of those too, and then also. But they take longer to process, so it doesn't have that urgency that the main grants need where a teacher comes up with a great idea and they need to do it in a week and they need the money. Yeah, they don't wanna wait for a second meeting, so.
It was, this law has been around, but Mary told us, a lot of districts were grappling with how to, I mean, the time spent on a ten-dollar or a twenty-five-dollar grant, but it's the law, so.
Yeah.
Now we have to do it.
Yeah. Uh, all right, any last discussion? And so roll call, Margaret? Thank you. Glenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alan, yes.
Against the yes, very good, yes.
Last key, yes.
Will be, yes.
Never, yes.
Well, also, yes, that's unanimous as well, we're on a roll. We only have like four more things to add on, don't worry, guys. Uh, acting on the reappointment of the school physician. Uh, Lori, you taking it? Tammy, you taking it? Who's taking it?
Uh, I was just gonna mention, I think everyone knows Dr. Parkinson. He has been our school physician for quite some time. He consults with the admin, the nurses, and the counselors, uh, and he's extremely helpful. It is a law that we have to have a physician, uh, on staff to consult. And so, uh, I am recommending that, uh, the school committee approve for me to offer a three-year appointment, uh, another three-year appointment to Dr. Parkinson.
And I will, um, mention, start, I think the last time we did is we had some discussion, because none of us who have kids who see Dr. Parkinson were sure we could vote on it. And we did get, um, word, I think it was May time, said, yes, we could try it, because it feels like you might have a weird conflict because your kids go. Okay, is there a motion to approve Dr. Parkinson for a three-year contract?
Okay.
Melissa, and Margaret, you can have a second, Melissa, be to it. Any discussion about appointment of the school physician? Thanks. All right, it's a roll call, both, Margaret?
Yes.
Glenda?
Yes.
Alan, yes.
Against the yes, very good, yes.
Last key, yes.
Will be, yes.
Never, yes.
Well, also, yes. Thank, uh, that past year, I was thinking, thank you so much, Dr. Parkinson. Next is acting on the revised policy animals in schools, I M H. And you have the one with the strikeout. We had our first read on this at our last meeting. Um, policy people or Lori, uh, anything to add?
Uh, there were no additional, uh, requests between our last meeting and now, so it is as, uh, presented at our last meeting.
Thank you. As there are most to approve revised policy animals in schools, I M H.
Yeah.
I agree, and a second?
Sure.
Melissa? Thank you, any last question on this policy? All right, and so roll call, Margaret?
Yes.
Glenda?
Yes.
Alan, yes.
Against the yes, very good, yes.
Will be, yes.
Never, yes.
Well, also, yes, that's unanimous, thank you, policy people. And last, um, on the policies, it's acting on policy district website and social media, K D C B. Uh, and. I didn't hear, I didn't, I can't get it, it was in Margaret. Okay, we got issues, getting into Margaret.
Getting into that is not a speed message.
I'll say.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, uh, Margaret, can you vote?
Yes.
Great, Glenda?
Yes.
Alan, yes.
Against the yes, very good, yes.
Will be, yes.
Charlamagne.
Well, also, yes, that's unanimous as well. All right, and I think our internet is less wonky, so hopefully.
I'm gonna do the next of all policy, that would keep all the policies together well.
Sure, absolutely.
Is that all right to do?
Yeah. So, um, the first read is in our packet with the organization of the school committee meeting, policy B D A. Do you wanna make a motion?
No, I wanted to comment.
Please. So you commented on top, so you're gonna make a motion?
Somebody made.
Oh, no, we're not making a motion, because it's just a person, just a comment.
Basically, um, the change was to be clear that it would be okay to have the voting at the end of the meeting, because, um, a new. Uh, policy change.
But the previous policy was okay, no way, like.
Yes, very fine, and this is how we've been doing it. For the last few years, we've been reorganizing it.
I think that, well, did the policy say you had to do it begin?
The policy used to say.
The policy was kind of vague, vague policy.
So.
So there was from, start interpretation.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yes, agreed.
So, um, so this will come back, this is just our first read, um, but it will come back for, about a certain, any, uh, questions or comments about it so far or concerns?
If not, we can send them to, uh, Katrina, no.
Fair enough, okay, great, thanks, everyone, we'll have that at the next meeting. Uh, so, Lori, now it's you, presentation on your draft goals.
All right.
As part of our evaluation policy. All right, yeah, we can see it.
All right, great. Uh, so, uh, three goals again, and my goal's timeline, uh, is from July one to, uh, April seventh. The goal one is to ensure, uh, this is my student learning goal. It's to ensure the equity audit results are addressed by strengthening the bright spots and creating a plan to address the areas for improvement selected by the school community. And as you know, we did a process in the spring. Uh, the, uh, areas were, uh, selected, and those will be the areas that the district will be working on, uh, this year. You'll hear more about that, uh, at our September twenty-fourth meeting, as our district goals. And, uh, because that is our, our student learning goal, I felt that it was important that, uh, as the leader, I am overseeing to make sure that we are implementing that process. The focus indicators are standard one, the data informed decision-making. Standard two, uh, management operations, the environment. Standard three, family and community engagement, the communication. Uh, standard four, professional culture, uh, cultural proficiency. Goal two is my professional practice goal, and that's to build the capacity among all employees of the district to implement environmental stewardship, sustainability, education, and practices related to their role in the district. And this is, uh, as a professional practice goal, this continues to be, uh, a learning curve for all of us. Uh, but it, uh, after being awarded, uh, the, uh, National, uh, Green Ribbon District, uh, it is important that we, you know, that that's, getting that award is not good enough. We need to continue to look to, uh, ways that we continue our sustainability, uh, and continue to grow. The focus indicators are the standard one, instructional leadership curriculum. Standard two, management operations, environment. Standard four, professional culture, communications. And standard four, professional culture, continuous learning. The district improvement goal, my goal three, is to implement a communication strategy focused on community engagement and two-way exchange of ideas. The focus indicators are standard one, instructional leadership, data-informed decision-making. Standard two, management and operations, environment. Standard three, family and community engagement, engagement. And standard four, professional culture, communications.
All right, thank you. So, uh, three learning goal, or three, three goals for the year. One on equity, um, and equity audit, one on environmental stewardship for the district, and one, um, on, um, communications, building on communication from last year. And, um, the evaluation subcommittee already had, um, are opportunity to weigh in on those. Um, and then, the next piece, when we vote on the superintendent's goals, we'll have some of the benchmarks for what you'll be looking for throughout the year to measure whether or not she accomplishes them. Any last thoughts on that, second?
Yes.
Um, there was, I think the typo on your slide, it matters. Uh, this, the numerals had one, two, four, four on the end of goal two, I think, right before you went to the goal three.
That is, that is correct.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you don't have to have, just overall, you have to have at least one, uh, standard out of, um, you have to have at least one thing out of each standard, but I actually made them relatable to the actual goal. And so that meant in that one, there were two.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yes, so it's actually, those are pieces that are taken from the evaluation that we filled out at the end of the year. So they're referencing something else, which is why they're all up there. Uh, but when we do the presentation, the next, uh, school committee meeting about evaluating superintendent, you'll see those and then hopefully it'll make a little more sense, but yeah, it looks like there are. Yeah. Uh, sticking with you, Lori, we've got the superintendent update and the start of school.
All right, thank you, uh, so much. So, we had a great opening to the school year. It was, uh, we started out with a great convocation with our, uh, staff. And then we had our opening day last Tuesday. Uh, things have gone very smoothly. Uh, I want to give a shout out to the, uh, uh, the Falmouth Fire Department. Uh, this is a testament to our partnership. Uh, we usually have fire drills on our third day in, uh, but because of the tragic event in Georgia, uh, we had a discussion and, uh, decided we would put it off this year. The second piece we collaborated on was giving notice. So normally, uh, fire drills are not, uh, announced, but because of, uh, maybe, or lowering any kind of anxiety that students may have, we, uh, decided, uh, to, on this first drill, that we would make the announcement to staff, students, and families. Uh, so they knew that this was a, uh, typical drill. It is state law that we have to have a drill at the beginning of the school year. And so, uh, it, that was a must, and we, we should practice, um, our drills. Uh, that's what keeps us safe, so, uh, but that collaboration, so I really just wanna give a shout out to, um, uh, to, to the, to our collaboration, the, the fire department in being very considerate about our students. So, uh, on that line, I wanted, uh, an update on our, uh, second S R O. Uh, over the summer, they, uh, the police department and a couple of my principals conducted the interviews, and Steve Senior will be our second S R O, uh, the school year, starting the beginning of October. So we're excited, uh, to welcome Steve, uh, onto our, uh, our staff. We're excited about that. Um, just wanna, uh, tell you that in your packet, there is, uh, it says, "School committee members use the social media." Now, to a very, uh, potential valley, this is choose this open meeting law. This is a part of your packet. Uh, I'm giving it to you now, that you can read on our next meeting, September twenty-fourth. Mary Gans will be present, uh, she will be presenting some new policies for, uh, for free to the committee, but she will be here in case you have any questions about this as well.
Yes, so don't ask us, because we don't know. I was like, we can put it on there, but we can't answer any questions related to it, so. Uh, but you can, you at least have a lot of time to take a look at it and, um, and then have questions.
And then just one last thing before I leave. I, I, uh, I hope you find this as, uh, enlightening and positive as I did. Uh, at the high school, Alan Kazarian, uh, he, with all the new peer mentor, uh, seniors, he asked, uh, when he met with them already the school year, uh, why, uh, why interest, why are students interested, uh, and why should they attend Falmouth High School? And so their reasons were, the Falmouth High School is definitely trending upwards. There are a lot of fun events and real feel of community. Lots of opportunities to meet new students and feel a sense of belonging. Nice-sized school with lots of good people. A welcoming school community. Very caring, supportive, and helpful staff members and coaches. Good teachers who seek to make connections with their students. Good education with lots of hands-on experiences. Variety of course choices and elective program. Great C T E pathways and internships. Large number of clubs and sports for all students. Nice-sized school where it is easy to meet new people. And I have to say, all the work that we have done in the past years uh, around the sense of belonging, the sense of community, the connections, the relationships between adults and students, increasing the number of our programs, uh, that we offer. No one was prompted to say this, but our seniors are recognizing the changes and they're saying this is why students should attend Falmouth High School. So, this was just warmed my heart, and I just wanted to share it with you.
That's very nice.
Kazarian for asking the question.
Thank you for sharing that, that was great. Here.
To me, that's all the more poignant because it's slapping off the COVID bad feelings about. Like, you know, being isolated and everything, so it's even doubly nice, I think, Lori.
Yeah, so.
I um, in reading Dr. Harris's letter to the parents of the high school students this week, it struck me that. It was, it was very informative and. If we could come up with a way where information like that could be sent periodically to the eighth grade parents. As they're contemplating this year, their cho, their choices for their student. Um, their high school, for their high school career, I think it would be helpful um for parents to be able to. See and hear a little bit more what's going on in the high school.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Thank you, Susan, for that, uh and I will definitely talk to Dr. Harris about sending his communications. Uh, last year, we did a real press on uh visiting the Lawrence School a couple times, administration, students, uh and to talk about the high school. Uh, they also added the new event last year where uh eighth graders came to the high school. And in the gymnasium, there were teachers, all the programs were presented and the eighth graders got to go through and learn uh about that. In addition to our eighth grade uh visit to uh the high school. So we're definitely increasing opportunities, I'd like everyone to know that, uh and we certainly would like to hear any other ideas, uh we are open. I will say that uh, I, I think that that uh full court press helped because uh we had. Uh, more students this year than the previous year that, that uh chose to come to uh Falmouth High School.
Thank you, great. Any last questions for Lori? Um, I have one, can you just um mention the, the tennis courts and the, and the official, I know there's a really mixed paper, but not everybody gets the paper.
Uh, yes, so we had a, I, I thought a nice turnout at the dedication uh Friday afternoon at four o'clock. Uh, it was nice to see uh the family of Jack Rearn uh present. And uh, there were some very nice things said by many people, uh I thought it was very nice. And if you haven't gone to see our tennis court yet, uh please go by and see them, I mean, they are absolutely beautiful, they are so professional. I don't know many high schools, uh or any actually, that has courts uh like we now do have at the high school, so I thank the town for that. Uh, Bob Antonucci uh saw the whole project through as the project manager for us. Uh, which was exciting and it was mentioned at the dedication that uh Bob was actually Jack's principal. And so I knew each other well, so uh that was uh, it was, it was very nice, and Melissa, you were there too, and I don't know if you want to add.
I, I thought the, well, first of all, it was perfect, it was perfect for tennis and it was perfect for dedication, so I really thought it was just a. A nice heavenly nod perhaps, um, it, I don't know, I, I, um, I was grateful to be there, I was grateful to be part of the process. Um, I think the family enjoyed themselves, I did see a few family members over the weekend just happened to dance out and about. And they were very, very appreciative to the town, to the district, to you Lori, uh to the committee and uh school. And um, they, they were very happy and Mrs. Reardon was very happy. Thank you, thanks, uh Margaret?
Um, I, I sort of want to go back to the notion of the uh eighth grade. Um, when I attended the last performance of um, last show I saw. The warmth, the connection, the dedication. Things have for each other was so evident, almost, you could visibly, physically, anyway, you could feel it. And if the eighth graders could come to that kind of a presentation and see that connection. I can't imagine them why they wouldn't want to come here, it was just so wonderful. I don't know if they can be invited the la, that last day free just to show up. But it was, it was so special and it would really, um, you have to, you have to know what's happening there and the connection students have to each other was perfect. So um, I would think about that.
Thank you.
The, the, the eighth grade kids coming and stuff, uh, do we, I don't know if we have, we don't have an Instagram for the district.
Yes, we do.
We do. Thank you, everyone. Because eighth grade kids live on Snapchat, Instagram, TikTok, that's a much better avenue of getting them, whether you school popular. Than the high school students, the film students can actually school popular reels and shorts, that's a much. More viable way of getting the word out there.
That's my two cents.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on from Lori's update, we've got routine business approval of the minutes from July eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, are there any edits to them before we? Anything, all right, is there a motion to approve the minutes from July ninth?
There, there was, there was a problem in it and I don't have it, I have my. My book in my car because I, that's where I was gonna go, but there was an issue with those minutes.
Do you remember?
I don't remember what it was. It was a minor thing, but it was a problem.
Okay, well then, since you, yeah, we'll just hold on this and we'll approve, we can approve two minutes at the next meeting, I'd rather approve them and have them rewrite, then approve them and have the correct.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, thank you for whatever catch it was, um and so we'll just uh hold this, uh table. For me today, uh, the week, it's only in two weeks, so it's not that great of a delay. Uh, committee member reports.
Okay, um, I sent on a email today with a survey monkey for the cabinet. Did you all figure out that the first one went open, that's why you got the second one?
Yes, thank you.
I must be, was, that's where it came to me, and I should have tried to open it myself before I sent it up. Hey, y'all got that, and on that same topic, you may remember we saying in the summer that. I wish I could get the kids who attended the um A S L P or um thing this summer. Um, if we could get them to come in, so if we can get them, not too long down the road.
When they forgot.
Yeah, when they may have forgotten, it was, it was incredible that. I went and I don't know if I told you, I got to drive the boat down the canal and I crashed in the canal, but that.
That's great.
No, this is virtually. No. But they, because I'm a wise guy and I deserve it, which you know I'm a wise guy, they, they decided when I got up there, the instructor said, Terry, you have to do a three hundred and sixty degree turn. In the camp, but I mean, I'm joking about it, but when you're doing it, you really think you're on the canal, you, because the, the scenery and everything looks so realistic. That's just one of the many, many things they do there, um, and they, they have a. I talked to somebody who works there and said they, they love doing it with these kids because, you know, stimulus, they're schtick. Mass maritime, so they love that they can maybe get some of these youngins to um, come in when they make their college shows and. But um, the kids just love it, so if we could just somehow get a quick uh presenting, you know, comments from them or something.
Thanks for the reminder. Any other committee member reports, we haven't talked, yeah, Chris?
Um, so it has to be the liaison, kind of the carousel line project, so we had our first meeting, I think, today, yesterday. Um, and so it was Troy Clarkson, Lori, um, Rose, the principal of Mullen Hall, myself. And just to talk about, you know, kind of what they were doing this, this winter, uh where they were planning on kind of taking apart the, the canopy and the horses. But they were gonna leave the base, they didn't feel comfortable moving the base around for fear of damaging it. And then just kind of shrink wrapping it and trying to kind of make it look, look pretty, um so that's kind of year one of the next three meetings.
The new, the new version of the carousel, Chris.
Can I ask first a question, how are they going to um, like protect it, like are they gonna throw up or anything? No, not, 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 I mean, like a, kind of a physical barrier around.
Like kids from climbing out, you mean?
To keep that in confinement, you know, it's.
It's just the initial stage, so we haven't.
Okay. Now, you, now you have concern that you.
Yes, yes, I'll see.
That's fair, yeah, and I'm sure Laura's just got that up the front for her too, and uh. I mean, I'm sure she's curious about the carousel, but she's only kids getting nervous there, so. I didn't know this could be any committee to work, I didn't know you could be asked to be on the committee, not one of our subcommittees, and then you. Yeah, this is just sort of the liaison position that's very, I don't, I, we probably will only meet a couple times. But it's just.
No, you didn't, but I still.
Yeah, it's, it's not long enough lasting, I think, to warrant being actually on the, on the list, because I don't imagine it'd be more than a couple meetings. Uh, and the last reports, contract negotiations are ongoing. And we already did the evaluations. Those are mine too. That's it, uh, I want to adjourn. Sure, Melissa in the second. Margaret?
So moved, yes.
Uh, go ahead and vote.
Yes. Yes, Cohen.
Alan, yes.
That's a yes, or you're, yes. Let's keep it.
Looking, yes.
None, yes.
Welch, yes, for adjourn, thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.